I'll call to order the Arvada City Council meeting for May 17th, 2021. Call upon Councilmember Bob Pfeifer.
Thank you, Mayor. Would you all please join me in a moment of silent reflection? And now for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristin Rush, if you'll do the roll call.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeifer.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Simpson.
Here.
We have the minutes of May 3rd, 2021. Any changes or corrections? Seeing no requests to speak, that will stand approved as presented. Next, we have a proclamation for LGBTQ Month. Mayor Pro Tim Dot Miller.
Thank you, Your Honor. It is my pleasure to read this proclamation designated June as LGBTQ Month in Arvada. Lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender queer pride month, LGBTQ, is celebrated annually in June to honor the 1969 Stonewall riots and works to achieve equal justice and equal opportunity for LGBTQ Americans. Today, celebrations include pride parades, picnics, parties, worships, symposiums, and concerts. And LGBTQ Pride Month events attract millions of participants around the world. Memorials are held during this month for those members of the community who have been lost or hate crimes or have been victim of HIV and AIDS. The purpose of this commemorative month is to recognize the impact that LGBTQ individuals have had on history locally, nationally, and internationally. Following the reading of this proclamation, it will be sent to the National LGBTQ Task Force in Washington, DC. This proclamation states, "Whereas the Arvada City Council recognizes and proclaims the month of June 2021 as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQ Pride Month throughout the city of Arvada, and whereas all human beings are born free and equal in dignity and rights, LGBTQ individuals have had insurmeasurable impact to the cultural, civic, and economic successes of our country. And whereas the city of Arvada is committed to supporting visibility, dignity, and equality for LGBTQ people in our diverse community. And whereas while society at large increasingly supports LGBTQ equality, it is essential to acknowledge that the need for education and awareness remains vital to end discrimination and prejudice. And whereas this nation was founded on the principle that every individual has infinite dignity and worth. And the City Council of the City of Arvada calls upon the people of this municipality to embrace this principle and to work to eliminate prejudice everywhere it exists. And whereas celebrating Pride Month influences awareness and provides support and advocacy for Arvada's LGBTQ community and is an opportunity to take action and engage in dialogue to strengthen alliances, build acceptance, and advance equal rights. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and members of City Council do hereby proclaim the month of June 2021 as Pride Month in the city of Arvada, Colorado, in support of the LGBTQ community. It's dated the 17th day of May 2021 and signed by the mayor and members of council."
Next, I'll call upon Councilmember Lauren Simpson to give us the proclamation for National Gun Violence Awareness Day.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to thank Councilmember Jones for loaning me his computer briefly. I was having some technical difficulties. All right. This proclamation declares the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. It is to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence and to promote its reduction. The North Jeffco Moms Demand Action Group will receive this proclamation. And it so reads, "Whereas nearly 39,000 people die by guns each year, which is more than 100 Americans who are shot and killed per day in the United States. This includes suicides, mass shootings, and daily gun violence. In addition, it is important to note that people of color are disproportionately impacted by gun violence. Colorado's firearm suicide rate is 54% higher than the national average. Whereas, support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand-in-hand with gun safety and keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. And whereas, in January 2013, Hadiya Pendleton, a teenager who was marching in the presidential inaugural parade, was tragically shot and killed just weeks later, should now be celebrating her 23rd birthday. To help honor Hadiya and more than 100 Americans whose lives are cut short every day and the countless survivors who are injured by shootings every day, a national coalition of organizations has designated June 4th, 2021, the first Friday in June, as the 7th National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And whereas, the idea was inspired by a group of Hadiya's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas, by wearing orange on June 4th, 2021, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors such as those from the December 2007 youth with a mission mass shooting in Arvada. And now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and City Council of the City of Arvada, Colorado, that the first Friday in June, June 4th, 2021, be designated National Gun Violence Awareness Day, and we encourage all to support local efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. Dated the 17th day of May 2021, signed by the mayor and all members of council."
Thank you both. Now, we have a presentation from the Arvada Urban Renewal Authority.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Maureen Fair, the Executive Director of the Arvada Urban Renewal Authority, and I am thrilled to be here tonight to give you an update on all the work that we are doing in the Ralston Creek area. Next slide. Okay, so just a little bit of background first. This is the Ralston Fields Urban Renewal Area, and City Council approved this back in 2003. And then it sunsets in 2028. So you can see we're kind of in the final years of this area. So if you look, you'll see that there's a red boundary. That's the boundary of our urban renewal area. If you look, it kind of looks like a dog. We're going to be talking about the head of the dog today. Next slide. So this is kind of the core of the head of the dog. And if you look at this, this picture was taken around the year 2000, and it's three old shopping centers located at the corner of Ralston and Independence. And the area really never had an identity. We just kind of referred to it as the Triangle Area. But what I want you to look at, though, is to just take a minute and look at this aerial and look at how much pavement there is. And look at how much land was dedicated to parking. Next slide. So this aerial shows kind of a map of all the projects that are going to transform this area into a vibrant, mixed-use community. I'm going to go through all these projects kind of individually, but before I begin, I think it's worth mentioning that ORA has been working to revitalize this area for 18 years. It's a long time. And I think that that shows is kind of an indication of how hard it is to redevelop these old shopping centers. Next slide. So one of the first things that ORA did is say, "We need to give this area an identity." And so we looked around, and one of the key assets to this area is behind the shopping centers, and that's Ralston Creek. So instead of turning our back to Ralston Creek, we decided to embrace it, and we rebranded the area Ralston Creek. Next slide. So a part of that rebranding is to do the Ralston Creek streetscape. And this streetscape consists of wide sidewalks that are detached from the street, brick pavers, monument signs, trees. Next slide. Also, a part of that is to bury the overhead power lines where we can. Next slide. Okay, so the first center we focused on was Arvada Plaza. So this awkward shopping center had a lot of vacancies, crumbling infrastructure, and a lot of environmental contamination. So we worked with a developer to develop the next slide, which is Arvada's only Walmart. So this Super Walmart is actually quite small, and it contains a full grocery store, a pharmacy, a garden, and auto center. And it is also over landscaped. We introduced hundreds of trees and shrubs and grasses to this site. Next slide. So across the street from that is Independence Plaza, which is on the northeast corner of Independence and Ralston. And this had four tired old buildings on that site. Next slide. It has been transformed into about 30,000 square feet of small-format retail. And this attractive architecture really is welcoming and interesting, and there's wonderful patios that support the five restaurants that call that place home. There's anchored by a Tokyo Joe's, a Bank of America, Five Guys, and Mod Pizza. Next slide. So ORA purchased the former Safeway back in 2013 when it went dark. It has since been cleaned up environmentally and demolished to make room for the next slide, which is the Ralston Creek Town Homes. These are 44 for-sale townhomes, which have gone through the full approval process and will break ground hopefully in the near future. Next slide, please. Okay, Arvada Square. Arvada Square has proven to be our most challenging center to redevelop. We had an option to buy this in 2016, so we've owned it, no, 2011. We've owned it for 10 years. We entered into a deal with Loftus, our master developer, back in 2015. So for all these years, we have been working to redevelop this area, and we have gone through six uniquely separate site plans, but for a variety of reasons, those site plans just couldn't gain traction. So in the meantime, we have been working on the site. There was a lot of environmental contamination. We abated it. We demoed it. There was dry cleaning contamination in it that has now been resolved. So the site really didn't get traction until the ORA board gave approval to purchase the gas station located out front. So with that added to the site, we were able to come up with a terrific site plan. Next slide, please. So this should be familiar to you because you approved it earlier this month, and I just want to say thank you for all the kind words you had for this project. But what this project has is 27 for-sale townhomes, 186 apartment units, and really the most exciting element of this entire area, not just this project, but everything that I've been talking about to date, is that corner where the gas station used to be. It's the 5,000 square feet of retail. Next slide, please. So this really is going to be the heart of the area. On the corner is going to be a restaurant that will be dedicated to a local or regional restaurant with a large patio, and we're looking for a place that families and friends could come and linger. You know, with the shops at Ralston Creek, we have a lot of fast casual, and that has a certain need. And this, though, what we're looking for, is a place for people to come, their kids to run around and play. So this is surrounding an active plaza, which will have, you know, festoon lights above. It'll hopefully have games like cornhole and a fire pit. The little buildings to the north perhaps can have an ice cream parlor, but this is really a place for people to come and stay, and we're looking to have food trucks there as well. So next slide. Catty corner from this site is the old central stores. So we worked with the city, and we acquired this from you, and we are in the process of cleaning this up. So if you go by it, you will see that it is encased in this big containment as we are doing the environmental cleanup. And you see right below that is a site plan, and you can see the site plan includes, or the central store side, but it also kind of veers off into the Walmart area. Next slide, please. And so this is Ralston Gardens. We are teaming up with George Thorne to develop an affordable housing project here. We're looking to have the affordable rates be between 30% and 60% of the area median income. We are going, we're applying for those tax credits in August, so keep your fingers crossed for us. Hopefully, we will get that award. Next slide, please. That's a rendering of what the building would look like. Okay, so next slide. Okay, this is probably one of our funnest projects that I think Urban Renewal has done in years, if ever. So this is the existing Garrison Street path. In case you don't know of it, it is where Garrison Street would be if Garrison Street went through. So this is between Ralston and 57th, and there is an existing path there, and you can see a couple of photos of it. It is very steep. It is not lit, and it is not welcoming. In the summertime, it is blazing hot. It goes between the community garden, right to the west of the community garden. So what Urban Renewal is looking to do is create a very inviting kind of linear park that will take the neighbors to the south and give them a comfortable and inviting way to enjoy all the amenities that we just spoke about, and also the Ralston Central Park. And also, all the people who are going to be living there, an easy way for them to get down to 57th and the bike path to go to the transit station into Old Town. So next slide. Okay, so this is very cool. I think this might be the first time you guys are seeing this. So on the right-hand side is 57th. On the left is Ralston. So 57th has the big hill. So we have really been able to take advantage of this topography. Up at the top of that hill is the swaddly ditch. The swaddly ditch is how the community gardens irrigate their gardens. But we have worked with the swaddly ditch, and they have agreed to let us use the leftover water. So with the leftover water, we are going to create a water feature and have a creek run down that hill. We've also been able to, instead of having one big straight path, we've been able to make a kind of a winding path in order to make it a little more accessible on a bike. There's also, if you look carefully, some play areas for the kids. There is a ladybug, and there is a bumblebee, and the flowers for the kids to play on. So next slide. And so one of the really fun and exciting things is we are partnering with the community gardens, and what we're trying to do is kind of blur the edge of where the community garden is and where the passeo is. And we call it the passeo. That's just kind of an internal name that we're calling it. But they have agreed to do demonstration gardens along the pathway and to plant, you know, some vegetables, maybe some berries. We're going to have some fruit trees and allow the public, you know, with little name tags and all, to be able to help themselves. So as they're walking through, they can cut some herbs, they can take a tomato, but they have agreed to do that. Next slide, please. So the topography isn't just high as you get down to 57th. There's also a significant hill as it goes up to the community gardens, and we're really going to take advantage of that topography as well. And we're creating this pathway at the top of that hill and making a viewing area because from right there, you can really see the mountains beautifully, and you can turn around and you can look down into the community gardens as well, and it would be a great place to see the fireworks. And there's going to be kind of a terraced gardens as you go on the way down. And there's also a chance to do a lot of public art throughout. Next slide. Okay, so right next to, so you have the community garden, then you're going to have the passeo, and then there's a 1.6 acre site. And this 1.6 acre site contains only one house, which in a really dense area like this probably isn't the highest and best use. So we're working with a developer to develop the next slide, which is a small boutique apartment, 36 units, and they have agreed to hold two of the units as affordable. Next slide. Okay, so we're getting kind of close to the end, but Kmart. So Kmart has been vacant for over three years now. Next slide. So we've been working with the Morgan Group. They have come before you, and this got approved a couple of months ago. This is going to be about a 328 apartment project with 17 affordable units. You can see that as it goes along Ralston, there will be 10,000 square feet of retail, and there will be a small pocket park. Next slide. There is a rendering of what it could look like, which I just think is a very beautiful development. Next slide. And last but not least, we are teaming with the city to finance the enhanced streetscape along the Ralston Road project, along with the medians and the monument signs for the neighborhoods. Next slide. So what does this all amount to? It amounts to a lot. It is just under $300 million that is being invested in the area we used to refer to as the Triangle Area. And so we are introducing housing to this area and a variety of housing. We're going to have for sale, rental, market rate, and affordable. And in addition to that, there will be 185,000 square feet of new commercial space. I'm giving that love to you, John. Next slide. There's also additional benefits to this, and really, this kind of hearkens back to that first aerial that I told you to focus on, because we're taking an area that was auto-oriented, and we are creating a pedestrian-oriented neighborhood. And the way we're able to do that is there are three parking garages built into the development in order to put the cars somewhere so that the whole land isn't dedicated to cars. We're also introducing green. This area was a sea of asphalt, and we're doing that through the passeo, through the Ralston Creek streetscape. We're going to be improving the Ralston Creek, the banks of the Ralston Creek, and there are three little pocket parks built into the development. In addition, we have spent millions in environmental cleanup, and we have created connectivity to the neighborhood, whereas before, the projects turned their backs to the neighborhood. Now, we're creating these pathways so that everyone can come in and explore and enjoy the amenities. Next slide. So while I have you, I thought I'd give you just a quick, brief update on what we're doing in Old Town, just a couple of things. Next slide. You can go on from there. Next slide. So this is the Trammell Crowe Project. They are looking to break ground in July. So stay tuned for that. That's exciting. And the next slide. So the Tabernacle Church, I don't know if you guys are aware of this, but the Tabernacle Church has been vacant for a while, and we're working with a developer to reimagine this building. It's located on Yukon and 57th. Next slide. So they're going to do an adaptive reuse to this and bring in two or three retail tenants. They're putting an addition kind of on the back towards the alley, and Urban Renewal will be undergrounding all the utilities in that alley, and we're hoping to start activating some of these alleys. Next slide. And of course, the trolley. We are financing the trolley park. Next slide. I'm done. So if you have any questions or comments, I'd be happy to answer them.
Marriott.
Thank you. I wanted to make just a comment, and particularly going back to the Ralston Creek area. So, you know, I want to compliment Urban Renewal on this and also point out what a great partnership this has been between the city, the citizens, our commercial community, and everyone involved. You know, you didn't even talk about some of the components because they're not necessarily Urban Renewal components, but really add to this area, like the Ralston Central Park redo, that, you know, in my mind, a key component of this. And obviously, that's a very well-used park. But between all of those components, the park, redevelopment of really decrepit, at the end-of-they-life span, old 60s shopping centers, the Ralston Road corridor project, which is just starting now, we really changed this area and changed this area for the positive. And, you know, I also want to call out how far-sighted councils were back in 2003 to make this an Urban Renewal area, because I'm afraid if we were doing that today, we might get a very different outcome, you know, might be very, very much harder to do. And so they certainly had the timing right to look at that back then and the foresight to predict that. And then, of course, you know, the amount of time it's taken and the effort sustained over a long time for Urban Renewal to make this happen, and, you know, I can nitpick with this and that, and often do, at every chance, I absolutely do. But really, when you look at the big picture, this is very well-done. I think Urban Renewal has a lot to be proud of here. Couldn't have happened without Urban Renewal, and I think the city has a lot to be proud of here. You know, this really, you know, this part of Arvada could have very easily been very neglected and decrepit, and it is not. It's the place people want to be. So anyway, good job. Thank you very much for all the sustained effort and for not taking no for an answer and pushing forward relentlessly, and particularly, you know, the help in all components of this, the Ralston Corridor Road Project, the part that Urban Renewal played in that. You know, Urban Renewal didn't need to do that, but certainly makes all of this whole area, not just this Urban Renewal area, better. So again, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Miller.
Thank you, Your Honor. Ms. Fair, congratulations. This is incredible work. Your vision and your foresight for this was really beautiful, and I just have to think back. I mean, I'm excited to see you glowing and smiling right now because when you think back during that, putting Walmart in that space, which was the kind of the first thing that set this in motion, that was hard. And I remember being at those community meetings with you, and you were magical with that crowd, and you've done a great job, and I just want to commend your leadership and everything that Urban Renewal has done. $293 million, wow, that's incredible. You should be really proud. Congratulations.
Ms. Simpson.
Thank you. I also wanted to commend this vision. It was, I'm sure, an incredibly difficult and long process, and you're right, this is the first time I've seen the passeo, which is the one that I get really excited about, especially as a mom of a young child. Like, my daughter loves ladybugs. She loves them. So I think this with the creek and then the food features is just awesome, particularly for any parent who takes a kid over, because the ability to just grab an apple, any parent knows you have to have snacks. So I think that's awesome. I wanted to commend you guys as well for working with the community garden to get them involved. I think that really strengthens and enhances the project. Here in Arvada, we love our nature. You know, we were, as we always say, we're a big city with a small-town feel. So working nature through the elements of this, I think, is awesome. And then, just Mr. Marriott, always talking about how we're putting in all these residents, they have to have something to walk to. I think it's really cool they're going to have so much stuff to walk to, so I really like that. And my stupid thing's crashing again. Go figure. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Pfeifer.
Well, even though I wasn't here in 2003, I was here for Walmart and all of that, and you know, I think my biggest fear was what we were painting, because we only have one shot, at least 50 years roughly, you'd hope it stays for a while, to paint something really good. And we all had an imagination of what it could be and what it could look like, and obviously, you've got to get the stars and the moon and everything aligned correctly to get something to work well that's pleasing to council, pleasing to the community, pleasing for the Urban Renewal Board. And I think you did it, and I think sometimes patience is a virtue, right? Because things will come together as you move these pieces, because that first piece of the Walmart property was a hard one, but it set the motion forward to allow other conversations to happen, to get to a good place. And I think, even though it's not exactly what I imagined almost 10 years ago... though it's not exactly what I imagined almost ten years ago, we adapted, and we, you and your teams have met the needs of our community. So, good job in doing that and kind of reflecting on that. And what I really, I'm going to add one thing. The Urban Renewal, ten years ago, to the Urban Renewal today, I think there's been some sort of transformation in my feelings around it. Not that it was ever negative, but it was, you were trying to take care of blighted places and make it better. But now, I feel like you've become more ingrained in the community by creating these Paseo, which I love the word. I think you should keep it, but keeping connectivity that pulls the community into your projects. And that's a little bit different than I think in the past, if I think ten, twenty years ago, of Urban Renewal just taking care of the project. It's not like that anymore. It's, you've grown and grown and grown to make that connectivity between the community and your project, and I think that that's what makes us very successful. So, good job, Maureen, on that, and your team, too.
Thank you.
Well, Ms. Fair, before you get too big of a head, I'll, no, you've done a terrific job, and you and I have been through a lot in the last few years since I went on the Urban Renewal Board, and we've had great Urban Renewal Directors. We recognized one this past week who went off the board, Fred Jacobson, who had done a terrific job in so many ways throughout the community, but certainly on the Urban Renewal Board. And we've brought new blood into the Urban Renewal Board with some great new concepts and ideas. You and I have, I've had to deal with you and your hair on fire when things are not going the way you want it to go, and to, and I know Mr. Devon and you and I have had some interesting conversations over the years in terms of how a project should move forward. And this really is the fruit of those labors, and you, your board, your team are all to be congratulated for doing good work. And I know that there's still potential pitfalls in the future, but things are really looking bright, and I appreciate your perseverance. So, thank you.
Thank you all, and I am here representing the Ora Board, so then the Ora Board really thanks your support, and we really appreciate the city, because we wouldn't be able to do any of this without the city. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Good night. Next, we'll move to public comment. Tom DiAgostino.
Did I finally get it right?
No, that's pretty good. That's pretty good. You're real close. Very good. I want, what's, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. I wanted to summarize where we've been on this trash system. So, I want to give a very brief history before I get some questions, comments. So, after many public meetings with lots of opinions for and against the single hauler proposal, it was decided by the City Council with a public vote, without a public vote, that they would negotiate a contract for all residents in the city of Arvada, still without comment that Republic Company was chosen as the successful bidder. It was decided by the City Council that the residents would have to choose the level of trash removal service they want from the highest and most expensive to the least, the last choice, which is the opt-out option, which costs each household five dollars and thirty-one cents per month, but for no trash pickup. After the designated timeframe for all residents to respond, the city sent out a mailer, and there remains approximately ten thousand. I don't have any results, because nothing's been released, but the last time I heard was ten thousand residents who have not responded. Of those who have responded, approximately fifty-three percent were chosen the opt-out choice. This would indicate much less support to the city than the council maintained in the very beginning. That's what, you agreed, that you thought that there'd be overwhelming support for this, and as it turns out, it really isn't. So, let's go to the present here, and I have some questions that I want to present to the council. Number one, has the council decided to reach out to those ten thousand residents who have not responded? Can the public get some regular weekly updates on the responses from that group? We would really like to know what the numbers are. It'll never be perfect, but we'd like to get something. Number two, if the City Council knew then, what we know now, which is that over fifty-three percent voted against the trash hauling contract, would the council vote in favor of the trash hauling contract? And even so, could we get a results-only private vote of the council members? If they were to vote on this idea today, I'd be interested to know. And going forward, would the council consider dropping the opt-out fee, given the voter results of a city survey? That's important, because it's not overwhelmingly in favor. That's for sure. Number three, would the city cease using the language regarding the environmental issues concerning the road wear and tear, the air pollution, given that over fifty percent of the residents voted to opt out? So, that's not an issue. It was in the beginning, but it isn't at this point. The people have chosen, and they have spoken, and we want to know if you're considering any of these concerns. Number four, even though I've spoken to this council four times because of my concerns, there is no evidence that we've been heard. So, that plays to a feedback. We would like to have some feedback from the council. You meet, you talk about it, we'd like to know where you're at. It appears that many others have the same, feel the same way, and there's still no public comment about the trash hauling contract. Number five, now, why would Republic Trash Company back out of a contract when they have no liability, and they're receiving a net amount of four dollars and twenty-five cents per household per month for those who have chosen to opt out with no service provided? I mean, I would like to have that deal. I mean, if I was just to take a contract and get it and make that kind of money with very little liability, that'd be incredible. So, this contract needs to be renegotiated, because there's enormous liability to the city. This trash disposal contract, as it's written, is really bad for the city of Arvada residents. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tom. You know, and we've discussed in the past, we don't comment back to you, but I can certainly ask that staff get back to you with regard to some of your specific questions, particularly as to numbers, things of those nature. Thank you.
Mayor, can I ask just a point of clarification? The percentage he's using, is that an accurate percentage?
We do not have final numbers yet. That is the more, more close, closer to the opt-in, the cart selection. The opt-out was closer to forty-five, but we're getting final numbers, which I'll be happy to share as soon as they're final.
Okay, so it's forty-five that have done the minimum service?
Yep, but I don't even want to take that as a final number.
Yeah.
But I will tell you, also share with council, it is eighty-five-hundred who did not respond, not ten thousand.
Okay. Thank you very much, Laurie.
You're welcome.
And we'll keep that information coming to our citizens as we get it in. Vicki Walbridge.
My name's Vicki Walbridge. We are the taxpayers you serve, and we are angry. You took our vote away. Then you insulted us by declaring this is too complicated for the voters to understand. I guess when you're trying to pull something over on the citizens, it does get complicated. According to the last count, the city has had no response from approximately eighty-five-hundred homes now. That number coupled with the numbers who have opted out tells you that the so-called survey you based your decision on to move forward with the single trash hauler was absolutely bogus. You did it in the middle of a pandemic and refused even one amendment. It was all pre-planned. That's why you didn't allow it to go to the voters. Clearly, it did not matter how many people showed up that night you voted. You had already made your decision before you walked into this room. You have set up two classes of citizens, those who live in HOAs and those who don't. You are forcing an illegal coercive tax on the citizens who do not live in HOAs and who choose to opt out, and you're giving the majority of that tax directly to Republic, a private company, simply because these citizens are not signing up for the city's mandated trash hauler. You are penalizing people on fixed incomes and those struggling to keep up with high property taxes, high cost of living, and now inflation. Many of these people live in non-HOAs. At last week's council workshop, a council member said she had been receiving lots of calls from citizens about this, creating more trash trucks on their street. And that council member wanted to encourage those callers, that this will take a couple of years to straighten out. Well, what are you going to say to those of us who will have an ongoing tax forever, simply because we want to keep our right to choose and support free enterprise? Is it going to magically straighten out for us? The definition of a tax is money that people have to pay the government. So, you can call it minimum service-free to deceive the public, but let's call it what it is, a tax, and you are taxing one group of citizens who exercise their legal right to choose. This is communism. You deny us our vote, then you penalize one group with a tax, because that group will not fall in line with your mandate. This ongoing tax will generate hundreds of thousands of dollars in pure profit for Republic Services. Why would such a contract be so poorly negotiated with Republic Services? Why would you discriminate against one group of citizens with a tax, simply because they refuse your mandate? Why would trash carts be ordered before the city even knew how many were going to opt out? Why would the city deliver the largest trash containers to those who don't respond, and then go back to pick up who knows how many of those same trashcans? Was it stupidity? Was it total disregard for taxpayer money? Was it being out-negotiated by a thirty-four-billion-dollar company, or was it a payoff to one or more people? We may never know, but I don't believe I'm alone in thinking it was all of the above.
Ms. Mund.
I am Denise Mund. I am here to speak on behalf of the hundreds of people I spoke to last summer about the trash issue. I feel like they're not being heard, and so I wanted to come and point out that they're still not being heard. Now, you're continuing to push through the trash program, even though it is quite different than it was represented last year. There was, it's supposed to be just a small insignificant number of people that were going to opt out and choose not to use Republic. It's not that way. It is quite significant. It was purported that there would be less trucks in the community. That's not going to happen, because a lot of the people, myself included, we're going to be using our own trash company. The people that have not responded yet are going to be really mad. And I was here last week for the workshop. I don't think you're listening to what their concerns are or why they don't know. I cannot imagine why you have not done a sampling of why those people have not responded. The people I spoke to last year were very upset when they were expecting something to be on the ballot, and it never was. Now, here you are, making it even worse by continuing to not listen to the people. A third of Arvada residents have said it's not okay, and you're not listening. I think this is going to really hit the fan about mid-September. People are going to get their June, or excuse me, July and August tax, tax bill, trash tax bill, and their water bill mid-September, and they're going to be livid. And that's about a month before ballots drop. People are going to be mad. You're not listening to them. There's a lot of people in Arvada that, for whatever reason, have not heard the message yet. We can all sit here and say, well, they should have been reading the Arvada report. They should have been, you know, whatever. Okay, they haven't. That's a fact. And what's the outcome of that? They're not being heard. And I think it's time that you put a plan in place to listen to them before it blows up even worse. As an outcome, I think it would be important to, at bare minimum, take the tax off, the four-twenty-five, and renegotiate the contract.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next, we have the consent agenda. Ms. Miller. I'm sorry, the consent agenda. Let me run through the consent agenda. The first item on the consent agenda is a resolution authorizing a notice of termination of the professional services agreement between Journal Technologies, Inc. and the city of Arvada dated November eighteenth, twenty nineteen. The second is a resolution authorizing acceptance of a First Amendment to the Agreement Regarding Final Design, Right-of-Way Acquisition, and Construction of Drainage and Flood Control Improvements for Ralston Creek at Grove Canal, Agreement Number Twenty-O-Six Point-O-Seven-A. Next is a resolution authorizing a license agreement between Arvada and Cherrywood Point Investment for the grant of a revocable encroachment license to install an underground irrigation line within the McIntyre Street right-of-way at approximately the southeast corner of Sixty-third Avenue and McIntyre. Next is a resolution authorizing an agreement between Arvada and A-One Chip Seal Company for construction of CSB twenty-one ST-O-two, twenty-twenty-one street chip and slurry seal program, in amount not to exceed approximately six-hundred-and-ninety-nine-thousand dollars. Final resolution for the consent agenda is a resolution authorizing a change order number two to an agreement by and between the city of Arvada and Granite Inliner for trenchless sewer main replacement, increasing the cost of that Project Twenty SR-O-two by approximately five-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand dollars, for a total cost of a little over one-point-seven-million dollars. Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that consent agenda items R-21-073 through R-21-077 all be approved.
Motion for approval? That passes seven to zero. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to resolutions. Mr. Devon.
Yes, Ms., excuse me. Yes, Mr. Mayor and City Council, we're asking for approval of Resolution R-21-078, a resolution authorizing the city of Arvada to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Jefferson County for the funding and development of a feasibility study for the Colorado Front Range Trail. Briefly, the Colorado Front Range Trail is a project that involves many communities. Its aim is to establish a multipurpose trail from Wyoming to the New Mexico border along the Front Range of Colorado. It's about an eight-hundred-and-seventy-six-mile trail. There's a six-mile segment that's been identified in northern Jefferson County. What we are proposing with this intergovernmental agreement is to enter into a agreement with Jefferson County, working with the Trust for Public Lands, in order to look at a feasibility study for the unfinished segment of the Colorado Front Range Trail. That will, that will leverage some funding, including some funding through Dr. Cog, through the Multi-Model Options Fund to help put this project together. We are proposing to commit fifty thousand dollars. We don't have those funds budgeted right now. We would look to budget them in the 2022 budget, but this would be a project that would enable a segment of that Front Range, Colorado Front Range Trail to move forward. We believe it's a good project. It provides something that is treasured by our community residents in terms of their, you know, supportive trails. In the past, it would, the feasibility study is a total of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars that would be put towards this, fifty thousand dollars on our part, and we're recommending approval of the resolution.
Open it up for council questions or action. Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. If there's no other questions, I'll make a motion, so.
You may proceed.
I'm going to move that R-21-078, a resolution authorizing the city of Arvada to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Jefferson County for the funding and development of a feasibility study for the Colorado Front Range Trail be approved. And I'm going to make a comment, too. So, I first started working with the Colorado Front Range Trail, maybe almost twenty years ago, at least fifteen, with the Colorado State Trail Committee, and we have the opportunity to do something really unique here in Colorado, something you really don't see in other developed parts of this country, in having some of these completed through trails. And lots of segments of this trail exist, goes through a lot of different places. This little place in Arvada is one of the real important ones, all the way through Arvada and Jefferson County, and will also connect to the Peaks de Plains Trail, a little south of us in about Golden, which will eventually go all the way to, you know, initially up Clear Creek Canyon, but eventually all the way to Grand Junction. And so, this is really something that's significant, and I'm glad we're getting a chance to play a small part of it, and I'll certainly be voting yes on this resolution.
Very good. All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you. Mr. Devon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we're asking for council consideration and approval of Resolution R-21-079, a resolution authorizing the city of Arvada to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Jefferson County Public Library, delegating responsibilities for the maintenance of a trailhead at the Rocky Mountain Greenway Trail located at the Stanley Lake Library. You may recall that in 2021, we applied for, and were granted, excuse me, funding from the Jefferson County Partnership Program to build a trailhead at the Stanley Lake Library. This location is uniquely suited for access to the Rocky Mountain Greenway Trail, the Little Dry Creek Trail, and the Heritage Canal. Little Dry Creek Trail, and the Heritage Canal Trail. Jefferson, that, you know where the Stanley Lake Library is, which is at the corner of Kipling Parkway and West A6 Parkway. And the trailhead will offer a number of amenities, including a shelter and a kiosk, trail maps, wayfinding signs, interpretive signage. It will provide ADA access. Right now, if you have a disability, it's very difficult to park somewhere and find access onto that trail, because you literally have to go walk, you know, up an embankment that's really not accessible to anyone with disabilities. So, with this amenity, with these amenities here, we will have access for people of all abilities to be able to access these trail resources. The, this agreement will create the ability for the maintenance of the trail area, of the trailhead area. The city will be responsible for that. We estimate an annual cost of about $5,000 a year. We think that's a good investment in order to create better accessibility to these three trail resources, and frankly, I think a very unique and kind of beautiful little part of Arvada that, you know, is accessible to the views of Stanley Lake, as well as accessible to our trail resources. So, we're recommending approval of the resolution.
Okay, you open up for council question or action. Ms. Ford.
Well, I'd like to make the motion, if no one else.
You may proceed.
Is interested, but I also have a question.
You bet.
And I just wanted to ask, Mr. Devon, what is the reason behind using, even though it's only 5,000, capital improvement money as opposed to out of the general fund in terms of park funds or the park fund?
Well, typically, we use the Jefferson County Open Space Funds for these kinds of commitments, because that's what those funds are specifically for.
And that comes out of capital?
Well, we have a, we have some of our Jefferson County Open Space Funds that are allocated to capital, and some that are allocated to operational.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you. So, I move that R21-079, a resolution authorizing the city of Arvada to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Jefferson County Library, delegating responsibilities for the maintenance of a trailhead on the Rocky Mountain Greenway Trail located at the Stanley Lake Library be approved.
Mr. Marriott.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a comment here, too. So, this is another really important regional trail system. This'll go from Rocky Mountain Arsenal through the Rocky Flats National Wildlife Refuge, and ultimately up to Rocky Mountain National Park. And, you know, we are so very lucky to have this come through Arvada. We also have to recognize that our citizens value this stuff greatly, that these trails are part of what makes our community great. And I really am proud and thankful that we have the ability to do this, to both create, participate in creating this trailhead, as well as the future maintenance of this, because this'll be a great amenity for all of our citizens from everywhere. So, another good, really good project, and I will be voting yes.
Yeah, I'll likewise be supporting this. And just, my history is that I was on the library board from 1989 to 1999, and to see this added amenity to what I think's an incredible library in the Jefferson County system is just a tremendous asset for our citizens. With that, that passes seven to zero. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Miller, when I tried to jump ahead to call on you, it was because I knew you wanted to get out of here tonight, and so now you can do first readings.
Thank you, Your Honor. And I knew you were just plowing through this agenda, so I appreciate you. I move that Council Bill 21-016, an ordinance annexing certain land into the city of Arvada, Maple Valley Park, approximately located at 6,900 Indiana Street. And Council Bill 21-017, an ordinance rezoning certain land within the city of Arvada, Maple Valley Park, from Jefferson County A-2 Agricultural to City of Arvada OS Open Space, and amending the official zoning maps of the city of Arvada, Colorado, approximately located at 6,900 Indiana Street. And Council Bill 21-018, an ordinance annexing certain land into the city of Arvada, 6,700 Indiana Street, 6,702 Indiana Street, 6,710 Indiana Street, and a portion of 6,720 Indiana Street in the county of Jefferson and state of Colorado. And Council Bill 21-019, an ordinance rezoning certain land within the city of Arvada, Project Indiana, from Jefferson County A2 Agricultural to City of Arvada IL Industrial Light, and five parcels from City of Arvada CG Commercial General to City of Arvada IL Industrial Light, and amending the official zoning maps of the city of Arvada, Colorado, generally located at 6,370 Indiana Street, 14725 West 66th Place, 14785 West 66th Place, 6,700 Indiana Street, 6,702 Indiana Street, 6,710 Indiana Street, and a portion of 6,720 Indiana Street. All be approved on first reading, ordered, published in full, and public hearing to be set for June 14, 2021, at 6:15 p.m.
To be clear, it's 6,730 Indiana Street. I think you may have said that, and I may have misheard. But anyway, to be clear, that's the address in the last first reading item. And also, to be clear, approving items on first reading is no indication of how we, as individual council members, might vote at the public hearing. It's not an indication that we have prejudged in any way the application. It's simply to set the agenda items for a public hearing to be held on June 14, 2021, at 6:15 p.m. With that, you may start voting. And that passes seven to zero. Thank you. With that, we'll move to the appointment to the Park Advisory Committee. Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to appoint Ann Woods to the Park Advisory Committee for an unexpired term ending April 30, 2022.
All votes are cast, and that passes seven to zero. This Park Advisory Committee member joins a great Park Advisory Committee and all the other volunteer committees that we have in the city. We are blessed to have so many people who are willing to serve on our committees for us. We have no public hearings tonight. Do we have anyone that signed up for public comment at this point? Ms. Rush.
We do not.
Thank you. Any reports from the City Council? Mr. Fiver.
I just wanna say, Todd, did you do a great job with that. You know, I enjoyed actually listening to first readings. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Indeed. Yeah, traditionally, and it's been this way for a number of years, that the mayor pro-timed us the first readings, and I had the honor of doing that for a period of time prior to being elected mayor. Seeing no other lights, Mr. Devon? Anything you have for us?
Other than, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we'll have a workshop on Metrodistics next Monday, May 24.
Oh, we do have a need to cancel a meeting. So, if I could have, Mr. Marriott?
Thank you. I move that we cancel the July 12, 2021 council meeting.
This meeting's gonna be councils, so that the City Council can meet with our appointees to give them their evaluations for their past work in the past year. That passes seven to zero. So, council will be here, but will not have a meeting that night. Ms. Morris, do you have anything for us?
I do not, Your Honor.
Thank you. We stand adjourned.